Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, November 4th, 2013. It is a little bit after 7:00. All members of council are present. Excuse me. If everybody can rise and we will do the pledge of allegiance. And Deputy Mayor, why don't you lead us tonight?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a justiciable justice and moral.
Chief, do you mind?
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
If you'd like to join me in prayer at this time. We pray for our community. We pray for our nation. Lord, we also ask your special protection and your blessings on the Oviedo Women's Club, Great Day in the Country event, and spread their wealth far as they often do each year as they turn these things back into our community. But protect them, give them good health, give them a successful day. And, Lord, as Veterans' Day approaches us, we're reminded of the sacrifices of our military veterans, past and present. You bless their families and protect them and give them good health. And we ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Hey, Chief, before you disappeared, did you want to go over all these great events that you handed out to us? Here you go. Why don't you make the announcements now?
The first flyer you have is for the inaugural Guns and Hoses, where our law enforcement and fire rescue are competing for their favorite charitable events. And that is scheduled for November 16th, 6:30 PM, at Jackson Heights Middle School.
What are they doing, a basketball game?
Basketball competition. I've been told that I'll be assigned a seat in the bleachers, and they'll only call upon me if needed, so I don't expect to be playing. But no, the public's invited, and it's an exciting first-time event for us. We've done softball in the past and thought something different this time. And, of course, the Oviedo Historical Society Hometown Tree Lighting Event is scheduled for the first Saturday of the month following the farmer's market. That'll be Saturday, December 7th, begins at 5:30. Santa arrives promptly at 6:00 PM. And we'll have the usual refreshments, eggnog, hot apple cider, free food, and chips and drinks and so forth. We have live local music performances on the front porch. Perhaps the Shank family might entertain us again for a few minutes as well, so we look forward to that.
I was checking the schedule right now, I see.
And our police chief always controls the snow-making machine, so have mercy on him. And then, of course, our annual Santa Claus Around Town event, sponsored by the Fire Department. I've lost count, but it's 35-plus years we've been delivering this thing. First hosted by the volunteers, starts December 9th, all the way through the 13th, with a rain makeup on the 14th. Knock on wood, we don't need that. The information will be displayed on the city website. So, Mayor, that's kind of it. I know Drew has some information coming up soon on Snow Mountain and perhaps some of the Parks and Rec events as well. I didn't have those available tonight.
Actually, Chief, I can help you with it. Snow Mountain is the 14th. The Holiday Parade starts at 4:00. Snow Mountain is at 5:00, unless you buy a VIP ticket, then it starts at 3:30 for Snow Mountain, and it'll be over at the mall like it always is.
And there's a homecoming parade this Thursday, Oviedo High School Homecoming Parade as well.
November 7th, is that?
Yes. I believe that's correct.
Yep, the 7th at what time? Usually it's like 4:00 or something.
Chief? 4:30.
4:30, Oviedo Homecoming. Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
When is Snow Mountain, the 14th?
14th. Holiday Parade starts at 4:00. Snow Mountain's at 5:00. And no, you cannot use the confetti gun this year. Councilman Shank's already deserved it, sorry. Actually, look, Councilman. All righty, our first-
I lost it because the sweater, the jacket that shot out the back last-
Your son, your grandson's jacket that I shot out the confetti gun last year was in. Well, now that we're thinking about it, Councilman Shank, you did have it all to yourself at the haggerty homecoming parade, so we will pass the lever around a little bit. Our first item of business is the Distinguished Budget Award. If everyone can join me down in front of the dais, and Mr. Cobb, while we're coming down, can you give us a brief introduction?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a request for the council to recognize Ms. Robin Hayes and Ms. Gail Bigelow of our Management Services Department, who are being awarded the Distinguished Budget Award for governmental finance, from the Governmental Finance Officers Association, for the production of the fiscal year 2012-13 budget. In April of 2013, the city was notified by the GFPA that the city received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The award reflects the commitment of the city council and the staff to meet the highest principles of government budgeting. And in order to receive the award, the city had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. This is the eighth year that we, the city, has received the award, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cobb. I'm ready to proceed. Ms. Bigelow? Come on, would you join us, please? I have a certificate here for the Governmental Finance Officers Association of the National Department of the National Department of the Department of the National Department of the City of Oviedo. Congratulations. You know, I'm very proud that not only the job you do, but the reputation of the city. Great job, though. Give it up.
Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes for October 21st, 2013. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept that minute on October 21st?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now up to the public comment portion of our meeting. I do not have any written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, we're going to close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, with the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Shank.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda and pull number five, please.
We're going to make five, 5A, at the request of the city manager. Is there a second?
No second.
And motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, items number four and six, and move five to 5A at the request of the city manager, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Cobb? We will turn five, which is now 5A, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to consider the plat for the Oviedo on the Park subdivision. What we, reason I asked that it be pulled off the consent agenda was that after we had prepared the packets and provided you with the proposed plat, we learned that we have an additional property owner. And the, that additional property owner is not reflected on the plat that was provided in your packets. What I wanted to do was to inform you that, in addition to the city of Oviedo, these are the property owners that are listed on the plat. It's Park Place Apartments of Oviedo LLC, Oviedo Apartments of Park, Oviedo Apartments on the Park LLC, and then this is the new one, Ashton Orlando Residential LLC. The plat doesn't have any other changes to it. It is consistent with the master plan. It meets land development code requirements. The city attorney has reviewed it and found it acceptable. Our city survey and consultant has reviewed it and found it meets state statute. Just wanted to give you, give you this new information, the MyLars. We already have the new MyLars with the, all of the property owners shown on the plat. I just want, like I said before, we recommend adoption of the resolution. We just wanted to inform you of this change in ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Do we need to amend the motion to recognize Ashton, or just by doing, just by accepting the plat, we're accepting it? Okay. Any questions from council? I just need a motion.
Motion to accept ordinance number-
Resolution.
I mean, resolution number 2755-13.
There are motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, say the fava saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, ordinance number 1572, Amendments to the Land Development Code. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to adopt amendments to the Land Development Code, Section 6.40 and Table 6.16. It's regarding signs in the new downtown redevelopment, development and redevelopment zoning districts. The city council conducted the first public hearing of this ordinance on October the 7th, 2013. You conducted a second public hearing on this ordinance on November the 4th, 2013. And at that public hearing, we scheduled a public hearing for tonight to allow the staff to incorporate some additional revisions to Section 6.403D temporary signs, Section 6.403H real estate signs, and Section 6.04, 6.403I campaign and free speech signs. Our Development Services Director, Teresa Carrera, is here tonight to go over the amendments with you. The staff outlined the amendments in your memorandum, has also, they've also updated the ordinance with the changes that were requested by the city council. Tonight, we're asking that you read the ordinance by title only, conduct a public hearing, and then also to adopt the ordinance. I'll turn it over to Dr. Carrera.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. So, as explained by Mr. Cobb, we were directed to incorporate some language into the ordinance. And one change we, we were asked to do was to make clear that other temporary signs would be allowed one per tenant. So, before, we were allowing a sum of temporary signs up to a maximum of 12 square feet, and now we are allowing just one sign in the other temporary signs. So, this change was incorporated.
Can you repeat that? I didn't, it's one per tenant?
In the other, other temporary signs, before, we would allow one temporary, temporary signs up to a maximum of 12 square feet.
Per tenant?
Per tenant. And now we are allowing just one.
One, one per tenant?
One per tenant.
Okay.
So, we cannot split the signs. Before, you could split the signs.
So, if you have 10 tenants, you can have 10 temporary signs?
Yes.
Okay.
At the same time?
For the, for the other temporary signs, it's per tenant. That was the direction we had.
I want to make, I just want to make clear that that's, that was the intent, I remember, and not the one per, per parcel-
Premises.
-was what we did have the conversation on.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's per tenant, yes.
Thank you.
And then, the other change that we were asked to do was to split the real estate signs and have different standards for non-residential and mixed-use and residential. So, we have different standards now. And the same for campaign and free speech signs. So, these were the changes that we incorporated last time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Group, could you read ordinance number 1572 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to the regulation of signs, amending subsection 6.0, 6.40, including table 6.16, Article 6, downtown mixed-use districts. Land Development Code of the city of Oviedo relating to new downtown development and redevelopment districts sign standards, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for penalties and remedies, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing up. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on ordinance number Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1572.
Second.
The motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, any questions?
Nope, everything's good.
Counselor? Okay. Councilman Shank?
Teresa, what's the maximum size of temporary signs again? I apologize. So, those banners, so basically, could it be one of those flags that are 12 square feet that we see sometimes around? Like the flags that wave?
Attention-getting devices are not permitted here.
Cannot be those flags anymore. It used to be, right, Brian? Weren't those flags considered until we went to the temporary signs? I'm just making sure. The 12 square feet, it doesn't include those, like banner, again, high-standing?
Oh, no, no. Those won't be allowed.
Those are now moved into the attention-getting device realm when we did that.
Right.
Okay. But it's still 12 square feet for each sign, for each temporary sign.
For the other temporary signs, yes. Not exceed 12 square feet.
Again, I'm deathly, 12 square feet times, multiply that by multiple tenants, and if I could put the sign, if I could put this picture up that's sitting out in front of the Dunkin' Donuts at the corner of 426, and that's 12 square feet. All of those are each 12 square feet, okay? And each one tenant has one of those out there. The Dunkin' Donuts, the Tijuana Flats at the corner of 426 and-
Oh, that's the one down by Tuscula, right?
Yeah, by Tuscula. They have those flags out there. They're the same size. They're 12 square feet. They're flags, mind you, but it's still, they're all 12 square feet, and they've got one-
I don't think they're-
But they can, it's the same thing. You can do 12 square feet, each one of them, each tenant can put out there.
Yeah, but I don't think they can do the attention-getting-
They can't do the flag, but I'm saying it's the same square footage of signage that you can put out there. Is that 12 square feet per tenant? It just, I just think it's a really bad idea to allow that.
Are these banners hanging off the buildings? Is that what we're allowing? Or can these be signs on the ground?
These could be banners.
Are they banners only, or banners and/or signs on the ground?
They could not be temper, attention-getting devices. So, if anything that looks like attention-getting devices wouldn't be allowed here. It had to be a temporary, like a banner, a temporary sign.
Right. This is 12 square feet as opposed to a 32-square-foot sign that's allowed elsewhere.
Yes, yeah.
Mayor, yes, it could be, it could be a wall sign or a banner on a wall. It could be a ground sign as well. It just couldn't be both at the same time. You can only have one, one sign.
We'll see how it works out. But, you know, the multiple sign issue, as Councilman Shank brought up, is a problem. And I know we're trying to be as business-friendly as we can, but all you have to do is drive down 434 and look at the shopping plaza right now. Let us three of them going on at once becomes an issue. But I guess it's only for 17 days, so we'll see how it all works out.
Yeah, and also, we don't expect street malls here in the new downtown. So, there's another consideration.
We'll see. Thank you, Teresa. Any other questions? Councilman Britton? Counselor? All right. Motion on table is to adopt. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That was four to one. Barbara, you got that? Okay. Item number eight, ordinance number 1576, an ordinance amending sections 28-21, subsection A, 28-22, subsection A, 28-23, subsection A, 28-24, subsection A, and 28-25, subsection A, of the Code of Ordinances, updating the impact fee schedules. Next time, I'll let you read all that, Brian. Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve an update to the city's transportation, law enforcement, fire rescue, parks and recreation, recreation and parks, and administrative facilities, impact fees. Our city code requires that every five years, we conduct a technical, we have an update through a technical report that provides the basis for our, the adoption of our impact fees. And the last technical report was completed in 2006, and the city council adopted the fees that resulted from that. The technical report is going to establish the maximum fee that the city can charge. City council adopted resolution number 2506-12, selecting Tindell Oliver and Associates to prepare the technical study for this update of the impact fees. The impact fee study, it updates the technical calculations to ensure that our impact fee program is compliant with state statutes. It creates flexibility in our transportation impact fee in that we can now use it for roadway and for transit projects. It also, it provides us with an inventory of capital facilities for our five-program areas. This will help us as far as our land use planning efforts and as far as identifying our future capital needs. And it provides us with the current cost of new development to the city in the five-program areas. The impact fee study shows that most of our fees have decreased. We do have a few that did increase, though, mainly in law enforcement and in recreation and parks. It's recommended tonight that the city council read the ordinance by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt ordinance number 1576. Mr. Steve Tindell and Ms. Nilgun Camp are here tonight to present the technical report and the recommended fees. So, I would recommend that you hear from them first, and then, then have the council, have the motion, have the ordinance read by title and conduct your public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Nilgun Camp with Tindell Oliver and Associates, and with me also, Steve Tindell. We have a brief presentation, okay, that kind of summarizes some of the material you've seen before. We start with background, and as Brian explained, last impact fee was in '06, and per your city ordinance and the legal requirements, TOA was retained to update the study. And some of the goals of the study was the compliance with state statutes and conversion of roadway impact fee to a multimodal fee to give the city more flexibility. In terms of impact fees, they are really a potential revenue source for expected future growth, and they are a one-time capital charge to new development. They cannot be used for operations or maintenance strictly for capital, and it covers, again, the cost of new additional capacity. The really primary goal of impact fees is to maintain the level of service and calculate the cost of growth. They tend to be most needed when there's high growth and limited revenue sources. And in terms of our formula, we look at the cost of new growth on any given infrastructure, and from that, we subtract any non-impact fee contributions by new growth, not to double charge. So, that net differential gives us the impact fee. In terms of the technical study, for each of the program areas, we look at the city's inventory of capital assets and try to understand what the current level of service is compared to the adopted standard. And we looked at the value of the assets at today's cost. So, if we were to build the same infrastructure, what it would cost today. And from that, we subtracted, again, any contributions from new development toward that infrastructure so that we are not double-charging. And then, we look at each land use and their impact on the, any given infrastructure to determine the equity among land users and determine the impact fee schedule. So, here, there are a few land uses just for comparison purposes. The fee schedule itself has about 55 land uses. This one is showing single-family per dwelling unit. So, the city's current adopted fee, including the county fees that are charged with the Oviedo, it's about $9,200, and that would go up to $9,400. That's one of the few land uses that's going up about, and it's going up about 2.5%. Multifamily is another example, and the current total fee in the city is about $4,900, and that would go down to about $4,800. And finally, office, as an example, current adopted fee is about $4,900 per thousand square feet, and that would go down to $4,200. So, of the 55 land uses, 45 of them would experience a decrease. And then, the fee increases about, for about 10 land uses, and the averaging is about 12%. And for six out of 10, experience is less than 10%, so it's not a significant increase. In terms of requested action, I think staff is looking for the adoption of the ordinance. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Group, can you read ordinance number 1576 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending Chapter 28, Part 2 of the Oviedo City Code, updating impact fees for fire and rescue, law enforcement, recreation and parks, and administrative facilities, and converting transportation impact fees to multimodal transportation fees, providing for codification and providing for implementing administrative acts, a savings provision, conflict severability, and ineffective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on ordinance number Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of our meeting and go on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1576.
Second.
The motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, do you have any questions?
Just, just what I said last time I came, I'm just, did great work. It's a lot of work to get this to where it is, and it's really nice to see everything in line, but a lot of it came down, and that helps us sell the city. And, you know, we've heard, when I came here in 2005, all we ever heard is how high things are. So, I think we can be very confident to say they're where they need to be, and a lot of them went down. So, I'm very happy about that. So, great job, appreciate it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor? Anything?
Nope, I agree with Deputy Mayor. I'm glad to see it go down. You did a good job.
Councilman Shank, any questions? You're good? Councilman Britton?
I'm good, thank you.
All righty. Motion on table is to adopt ordinance number 1576. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our first reading of ordinances, it is ordinance number 1577, People's Gas Franchise. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council-
Guys, thank you, excuse me, Brian. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
This is a, this is a request to approve a non-exclusive natural gas franchise with People's Gas, a division of Tampa Electric Company. The, the non-exclusive franchise specifically allows People's Gas system to operate within the city limits. All the natural systems, natural gas systems must also be operated and maintained to city standards. We originally brought the ordinance for, this is a renewal of the franchise agreement. Unfortunately, the franchise instrument was not signed within the 30-day period specified in the ordinance, which voided the renewal of the franchise. And so, we developed this new ordinance, and within this ordinance, there is a 60-day period to allow for execution of the ordinance. And the, as I said before, the previous one only allowed for 30 days. So, we're asking you tonight to basically re-adopt the franchise under ordinance number 1577. The term will be for 10 years. It's recommended that the council read the ordinance by title only and schedule a public hearing for November the 18th, 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Group, can you read ordinance number 1577 by title only, please? Mr. Group, can you read ordinance number fifteen seventy-seven by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the city of Oviedo, Florida, granting to People's Gas System, a division of Tampa Electric Company, its successors, assigns a non-exclusive natural gas franchise agreement, and prescribing the terms and conditions under which said franchise may be exercised, making findings, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, and ineffective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. Group. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number fifteen seventy-seven on November eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at approximately six-thirty P.M., here in the City Council chambers, Oviedo City Hall, four hundred Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, three-two-seven-six-five. So moved.
Second.
We have motion in multiple seconds. Any questions from anyone? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, moving on, resolutions, we have none. We have, do you have a discussion item? Item number eleven is the Auditor Selection Committee membership selection. Mr. Cobb, why don't I turn this over to you?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're asking for the City Council to establish the membership of the Auditor Selection Committee. On September the fifth, the council approved ordinance number fifteen seventy-three, providing for the creation of the Auditor Selection Committee. We are in the last year of our contract with our auditors, McDermott Davis and Company. The, we want to utilize the Auditor Selection Committee to select the new auditor. And once the members of the committee have been selected, their charge will be to ensure that the selection of a qualified auditor, one that can provide for a qualified audit for the city. It's recommended that the Auditor Selection Committee be comprised of three individuals. That should be sufficient, and that the, the City Council may want to consider appointing a, one of its members to the committee, as well as a private citizen and a city employee to serve on the committee. Not everyone on the committee has to be from a financial background, but it's good to have at least one person on the committee to serve, that serving, that does have a financial background. We're asking that you select members to serve on the committee tonight.
Mr. Cobb, do we have any written requests from residents to be on the committee?
I'm not sure, Mayor. I'm not sure if we received anything.
What is the council's?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I recommend the new deputy mayor down there, Britton, for this council, for this? He stole the sign, that's wrong.
Oh.
Well, he was a, but Counselman Britton for the, for the committee.
All right, that's a, the council member. Who from this, of the city employees wants to serve, Mr. Cobb?
I would recommend Mr. Boop.
Okay. Jerry?
Honorable Mayor, counsel, there is nothing that I would like more to, than to serve on this council, excuse me, on this committee, because it will help me guide the kind of auditor that I need to have. But really, the intent of this ordinance is to create a firewall, if you will, between the finance department and the auditor selection process. So to honor the spirit of the, of the intent of the law, I would have to respectfully decline. I should respectfully decline, because I'm in a position to significantly guide the audit process and influence the audit process. It would not be in your best interest for me to serve on this committee. I would like to be present during the discussions of those committee, of the, of the items associated with the committee, but I really should not serve on the committee. If you would like a, a high-level member of staff to be on the committee, I would recommend Robin Hayes. She is not in a position to guide the audit process, so to speak, and if, if you would entertain that, I think that she would be the best person from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Group.
Jerry, can I ask you a quick question while you're up there? And I thought I read, read something in the agenda packet, but why do we need to even look at a new auditor? It kind of takes me back, and Mayor, you'll remember this, because we, you know, before we had McDermott, we had these other guys who were with us forever. We won all these awards, they were great guys, and we had to change them again, so now we have the same situation. What's the reasoning?
Thank you for asking that question. I, I don't think that we need to look for a new auditor, per se, as much as we need to be transparent and honor the process. I will be very honest with you, it is extremely painful for your auditing, excuse me, for your accounting staff to go through a change in auditors. It's not easy, because typically, it involves a lot more work, because they want different schedules, they think differently. It all ends up with the same result, but it's kind of like a retooling. It's kind of like a new assembly line or a new assembly process that we would have to retool the entire finance department to meet the needs of the new auditing staff. But at the very least, the committee should meet, discuss the process, and determine whether or not they want to stay with the current auditor. I mean, you do have that option available to you, and if you feel that there is a need to look outside the city, then we would work with you to issue an RFP and get that out so that we can have a new auditor in place by at least the very end of April. We have to have a new auditor in place by the end of April if a new auditor is chosen, because it will take the summer to retool the entire finance department to meet the needs of the new audit process.
Okay, well, you know, counsel, I just wanted to throw this out, and you can sit wherever unless anybody else, does anybody have anything else to add? No? I mean, it's just, it's just kind of deja vu for me. I mean, our staff, to me, right now, has got so many projects to do. We've just won this award for the eighth year in a row. We are very transparent. It's on our website. This, this group that gives us this award, they're in here, they're looking. You just heard Jerry tell us how painful it is to change. I'm, I'm of a very simple mind with this. I have a, a company that's doing great, they know us, they know the city, they know the staff. I don't even think we should waste our time, to be honest with you. I mean, if you want to put a group together just to take a look, make sure they're doing the right thing, I mean, I hate getting rid of people that have worked with us and we've come to trust and rely on, and this is the second time that I've had to make this decision, and I didn't vote for it last time. So for me, you know, I'd like to hear what you all have to think. We're doing fine. You just got your eighth award here, again, we're, I don't see the reason to change. I don't see any need that it's going to improve, and it's going to mess our staff up, so, you know, we are transparent, it's good. So I'm all for just status quo, we're, we're doing fine.
I'm not sure this award was because of the auditors. I think this, this award is for the, the presentation of the.
But, but, but it all, it, it ties together, because it's budget, it's that we are out there, people are looking at our books and things like that, and, you know, I haven't heard any complaints about our current auditor since I've been sitting here, and I'd like the one we had before that, too, so I'm, I'm for just keeping it the way it is.
You got him back, though. He's just working for a different company.
Yeah, we got him back in a, we got him back in a different place, that's true.
All righty, what are the thoughts of counsel based on what Deputy Mayor?
Jerry, is this, is this a requirement that we stand the committee up, whether we make a decision one way or the other?
Mr. Group, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a requirement, now that we've passed the ordinance, that we establish the committee and make sure that we are following the appropriate purchasing guidelines to select the appropriate auditor. What's happened in the industry over the last several years is that many municipalities, counties, what have you, were not following the appropriate purchasing protocols to place an appropriate level auditor in place. They were going more after price than they were after the quality of the auditing team, and, or they were going after special favors because they had longstanding relationships with certain folks, what have you. And what the intent of this ordinance is for is to make sure that, again, the relationship with the auditor is not so close with the finance director or other decision-makers within the city, that those folks have the ability to influence the outcome of the audit in every, in any way, shape, or form. Again, it's, it's a form of a firewall, and to be in compliance with state statute, Mr. Group recommended, appropriately so, that we pass, that we put this ordinance in place to give you the opportunity to create the committee, to go through the auditor selection process, should you want to do so. Again, it's a way to place a firewall between myself and the selection process. Before, I would do it, make the recommendation to you, and you would move on from there.
So as a, as a process check, would, would it be reasonable to assume the committee would first do an evaluation of, of the current auditor and, and try to make a decision as to whether they, they are truly independent? And if, and then if they're not sure of that, then go and make the decision to go through the selection process? Or are you suggesting that we should probably go right into the selection process?
Can I ask a question real quick that may help? Are there any more extensions on that contract?
No.
There's the issue. That you, you, there's no more extensions on this particular contract. You may end up as a city selecting this auditing firm. I don't know, but you have to go through a procurement process.
This is a procurement effort, not a, not an integrity of the process effort, but we're trying to maintain that integrity.
Correct.
Both.
Yeah, both.
It's both, because the legislature reacted to the reforms in the private sector resulting from the financial collapse, and then they also reacted to the situation mostly in California, the city of Allen.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that one.
Allen?
There's so many in California.
Anyway, and, and can I just make one brief comment? Not every finance director for a city or county would get up and say what Mr. Boop said tonight, by the way, which is, don't appoint me. There are many who would say, I would love to be appointed, for the very reason that Mr. Boop said he didn't want to be appointed.
I, I, I agree with that, but I'd also like to ask, maybe Mr. Group, you can answer this, is, is, would it be appropriate that we retain Mr. Boop as a, as a consultant if we have questions?
He, he said he wants to attend every meeting, so my guess is, he will have somebody's ear.
They're public, right?
Excuse me.
Any other questions? No? No?
Sure. Then I'd like to, well, as the employee, I'd like to appoint, to appoint Robin. I kind of got sideways and backwards, but.
All right, well, we have two appointments so far. We have Mr. Robin Hayes and Counselman Britton. Council on consensus?
Mm-hmm.
One, two, three, four. Okay. All right, so we have our two appointments. Deputy Mayor, why don't you? No, we don't need a motion consensus.
You need one more outside person, all right? You need a third?
Yeah, why don't you ask Lonnie a question first?
Mr. Group, all right, just because the contract's up is why we need to go through this. That's what the legislature really wants done.
Well, it, it's, the legislature wants a process and wants a committee that is closer-aligned to you all, basically, to the board of directors in the private sector, to the local governing body in the public sector, because of some issues that have occurred. They want an auditor that's more, that's closely, more closely aligned to the governing body. And that process that Mr. Boop has described, which, whereby you select a selection committee or an audit committee, is intended to get to that.
Okay. No, so it's a legislative thing. That, that's what I was doing, so we have to go through the process right now.
And your procurement policies make you go through it anyway. You, if, if there was an extension, you could do it without the selection committee, because you wouldn't need a selection committee.
Right.
Because you could just extend the contract. But there's no more years left on this contract.
Right.
So.
Gotcha. Okay, so we need a, we need a citizen now, right?
When does the committee have to first meet? Mr. Cobb or Mr. Group?
I would recommend that the committee meet probably by mid-January, the latest.
All right. How many meetings do you think?
Can't answer that.
All right, here's what I'd, I'd like to suggest.
It doesn't have to be a citizen either. You could point another one of yourselves, or.
That's just a suggestion, maybe.
So we can either appoint another one of ourselves, another member of staff.
And just by the way, the auditor general in his guidance has basically said, I'll paraphrase it, the more of the governing body, the better.
So then.
This is supposed to adopt? I mean, the idea is that.
Based on that, then, we could appoint another one of ourselves.
Yes.
Counselor agree with that?
Mm-hmm. Well, the only reason you want to.
But they have to answer.
They, they answered us. That's, the, the whole idea is that it's not, I'll say, it's not just management making this decision in auditors. The audit information is for us, so it's actually, the more we're involved is, is a good thing.
Yeah, because the la, the last time that, you know, and counsel, Deputy Mayor brought up a good point, but, and I don't know who else was here with us when that happened. I guess maybe Counselman Britton was here, you know? The difference was, is that, you know, rather than having a voice in the selection, the selection got forced down our, forced on us. You know, it just, yeah, staff just decided, or city management at that time, just decided that, you know, Gary Akers and his group were out, and, you know, these new people were in, and when we all sat here and questioned it, we basically got told, well, that's my decision. So, I mean, so that, this, this is a, a, a different process. I, I don't have an issue with appointing another one of our own members. You know, I'm going to bow out. I've got plenty going on, so there's three of yous left. Would anybody like it?
I'll do it.
Do you want it, Counselwoman?
Yeah.
No, 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 she was about to chime in.
If you want it, please.
No, 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 I think you would be great at it.
Does the rest of the committee want Counselman Check? Oh, no, I'm kidding. Anybody have an issue with Counselman Check? One, two, three, four, five. Got your committee, guys. All righty.
Can we have a, another process check? For Jerry, is, or Lonnie or Brian, is, is the output of, of the committee going to be a recommendation of, of who we would recommend that we negotiate with, or are we going to do a pricing and negotiate a process also?
My, my understanding would be that the, unless you delegate selection to the committee, which I haven't heard you do, the committee would rank and submit it to the city, full city council for action.
Okay, so it'll be a recommendation based on the, the solicitation.
Okay. All righty, there was consensus, we have our members. Go forth and audit the auditors, I guess. You good, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
All righty, moving along, Mr. Cobb's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I received a, a notice in the mail a few weeks ago, and I made the assumption that each of you received it as well, and the more I got to looking into it, I'm not so sure that you did. But tomorrow, at between five and seven, Little John Engineering Associates is going to be having their, I think it's their second annual Pigtoberfest, and it's a barbecue event.
Be careful with that, there.
They're going to be holding it at their office, and there's going to be catering. I believe one of the caterers is Four Rivers, and their office is on Edgewater Drive, I believe it's fifteen, sixteen Edgewater Drive. I was talking with them today. Like I said, I made the assumption that you had been notified, but they were unsure, I was talking to Mr. Jones, and he was unsure as to whether or not you all had received an invitation, but they, their intent was that you were to receive one. So I wanted to let you know about it, and apologize for making the assumption myself, otherwise I would have sent it on to you. But, but anyway, I wanted to let you know about that. It is tomorrow night, and they said the more, as Mr. Jones said, the more the merrier.
Could you send it out to everybody, Brian?
I can forward it, yes, sir, I will. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Mr. Group, anything for us?
Nothing to see with it, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you. Counselman Britton, you're up.
I got a couple of things, and going along with that festive theme, the Boys Town in Central Florida is having a Cocktails for a Cause event tomorrow night, coincidentally, downtown at the Citrus Club. It's just a fundraiser to, to bring awareness to it, come down and share some fellowship and, and meet some of the Citrus, or the Boys Town staff, so you're all in touch with that. I'm going to be meeting with Brian and, and Jennifer Barrows, who was a, a vendor of office products, had asked that we give her a briefing on any, on our products that are coming up, so we're going to meet at the Little John facility, and you all are welcome to meet with her, with us. Three-thirty, Brian, or four?
Three-thirty. Three-thirty, and then we'll go to the Little John thing from there, and then.
Actually, Counselman Britton, it's probably better if you just meet with her, because if we meet with her, then Barbara's going to have a heart attack.
Oh, okay.
Because it's not twenty-four hours, and she can't notify the public, and she won't sleep tonight.
This was just a courtesy call she made, and I, and Brian was gracious enough to agree to meet with her and give her a rundown of what our, what we got going on out here. Thursday, we've got the barbecue on the Boardwalk downtown for the EDC. That's always a fun event. Wednesday, I'm going to have.
Wednesday, I'm going to have a very sad Calno meeting, because Mrs. Bauer was the chairman of, the upcoming chairman of the Calno, and we're going to have to discuss her replacement. It's not going to be a very festive environment at that, but that's all I have right now.
Thank you. My report, quick and brief, we had the Employee Longevity Luncheon about a week ago, great job by staff putting that on, and it's always fun for us to be here and to see just how long our employees have been with us. And we do have a lot of longtime employees, and we got to meet a lot of new employees, too. So that was a nice afternoon that was put on by the committee, and we want to thank you for doing that, and thank you for inviting us. Chief and I were at the Oviedo President's HOA meeting last, I guess it was last Thursday, right?
Thursday.
Last Thursday evening. That's the last meeting of this year, I believe. It was well-attended this time, they had probably about 20 people out, I guess, representing at least a dozen HOAs. The conversation was good, I gave a brief update to them all, and I think it went pretty well. And I know they had a lot of speakers also, right, Chief? I didn't get to stay for the whole.
I did.
Good. I was at the Jackson Heights Middle School Beta Club. I got to welcome, I think it was about 60 kids into the Beta Club this year at Jackson Heights, seventh graders, and Junior Beta Club, right? Junior Beta Club, thank you. That was a fun event, I got to address them all, and the kids were spectacular. It was really well-done, and they have to maintain a 3.75 or better JPA, GPA to be in it, so it was quite exciting. We had a Dare graduation.
And give back to the community, that's also...
Right, exactly, that's a big part of it, is that they have to go give back to the community, and they learn how to be leaders in the community. So that's what my whole talk was, about being a leader in the community. Dare graduation we had this past week over at Lawton Elementary School. As usual, our own Diane Duffy just did an absolutely incredible job at it, just amazing the respect and command she has of those children when she's done with them. Farmer's Market Chief this past Saturday, or both Chiefs, I should say. Great job by everybody. That looked like it was well-attended, I was there early, missing a couple of vendors this month, I guess there was another event going on somewhere, right?
Did not help.
Well, we need the Jamaican guy to come back, because I didn't have my special lunch for college football on Saturday. Today, I did a State of the City for the folks over at Keller Williams, for the agents, and again, just like I say every time I do a State of the City, you know, when you go in, everyone's a little confused about what's going on, because they see so much construction when you're done. You paint the picture, they understand it, so that went very well. We have, let's see what's coming up this week, a bunch of things, don't we? State of the City again on Thursday, all the mayors are doing a State of the City for the Seminole County Chamber, that's at, everyone's invited, it's at 7:30 a.m. up at the Westin. I can expect to see you all there? Yeah, all volunteer at once, but that's this Thursday thing. Councilman Schenk is planning, are you going to be there, Councilwoman?
What is it?
Yeah, I don't play, yeah. Honestly, I don't want to go, I'm going to let Councilman Schenk be up there. That's a tough one, you have a bunch of sleepy mayors and...
He keeps stealing my signs, I just sent him.
Why don't you come?
Because he stole my sign, that's it. My sign was there.
We'll put it back.
Oh, Vision of Hope fundraiser is this, not fundraiser, breakfast is this Wednesday. That's over at Sid Albins Church. That is, again, another 7:30 in the morning. I have a table, so who's going to be there? Look at you all raising hands. You'll be there, Chief?
Is that at 7:30, too?
Oh, yeah. I will be there. I'll be representing the city, Chief and I, so that'll be fun. Great Day is on Saturday, that's already been mentioned. Our very own UCF BCS-rated Knights are playing Saturday evening, so that'll be a great football game. They beat Houston, they'll probably be in a BCS Bowl, so that's coming up on Saturday night. And with that, end of my report, and Councilman Schenk, you're up.
Great Day is coming up, as it said. Also, the Chamber Monthly Luncheon, it's the nonprofits, one of about 48 nonprofits, mainly because they have someone speaking from the Youth Push Foundation.
Oh, that's on Thursday, too.
It's Thursday also.
Anyone want to hear my schedule on Thursday?
And the speaker...
State of the City, Metro Plan, Chamber Luncheon, and then...
EDC barbecue.
Then the homecoming parade, then the EDC barbecue.
And I forgot, the homecoming parade.
And it all starts at 7:00.
Yeah, the Chamber Luncheon is a packed house, because of the speaker mainly, it's the Youth Push Foundation, so he'll be a very good speaker for nonprofits. And it was a great Dare graduation, we got to see the future mayor of Oviedo and probably Senator for the state of Florida.
What was that child's name?
I wish I remembered.
Chief, do you remember that child's name?
He was the most outstanding fifth grader I've ever seen. He just charisma all over the place.
He was a Dare graduate, he won the Dare graduate...
The only time.
...of the year, and then he won the essay contest, too.
Both of them, she was like, "I don't do this," but it was just so overwhelming, and it was overwhelming.
I just gave my maiden badge, it's easy.
He was very, very nice. And condolences go out, do go out to the Bauer family, from all of us, myself especially.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Yeah, Councilwoman, she can't do any of them 7:30s, because Cindy is a major player at Great Day in the Country. She'll be up at, what, 5:45, I think I read, getting out already?
I'll be there.
She'll be there, 5:45. That's such a big undertaking, these ladies.
I'll be there Friday night until 8:00.
Such a big undertaking, that, you know, we all walk through, and it just looks good and past, and you don't realize all the hard work, so we appreciate that. That's a big undertaking, and...
I'm sorry?
Mayor just asked me to do this, we can't believe we let this, but November 15th, Friday, November 15th, from 9:00 to 10:30, will be the ribbon cutting for the Oviedo ER, which has been long awaited. It's a beautiful facility, it's a little picture up here, if you guys want to see it after, but that's going to be a great start to hopefully bigger and better things there. So that's, again, Friday, November 15th, from 9:00 to 10:30. Did you not say also the next day it's open to the public? So that'll be Saturday, what time is it, Mayor?
10:00 to 2:00, and they're doing shuttle buses from the mall.
Yeah, 10:00 to 2:00, the public can go in and check out the new ER, but you have to park in the mall and take a shuttle bus over, so that's...
Patients are Monday, right, Chief? The 18th is starting to accept patients. 8:00 a.m.? 8:00, Chief?
I'm by 8:00 a.m., they should make their first batch.
Really?
Wow, that's a...
Eight a.m.?
I'll tell you what, I hope that none of us ever need to use it, but I will tell
you, it'd be a very comforting thing, because it's, and Chief, we've been through this, like with my dad and stuff, when he has to go, and Steve's father and stuff, it's a long ride to Winter Park and Altamont when you're sick, you know, in the car, so now we got our own world-class facilities, that's really good. And then just to touch on what Keith and Steve said, you know, we all want to send our condolences out to the family of Diane Bauer, she's our school board member, what a nice lady she was, worked so hard and made this school district, you know, a big part of what it is today, and she will be sorely missed, a very colorful person, big heart, and she passed this a couple days ago, so we just want to send the best from the city out to her family. All good.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Well, you guys pretty much covered everything.
You did. Great. You know, there's a football game on tonight.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. Friday is the Tri-County League of Cities First Annual Gala, Distinguished Service Awards, and from Oviedo, we do have several of our members who have been nominated for this award. Mayor Percampier is nominated for the Elected Official of the Year. We don't know who the winners are going to be until that night.
You might know, you're a board member.
And Mr. Cobb was nominated as Executive Director of the Year, and Robin Hayes was nominated as Employee of the Year. And did we have another one? Lars White?
Yes, ma'am, we had two other nominations, too.
Oh, we did?
We had Chief White in the executive category, and Mr. Steve Williams, our fleet manager, as well, an employee.
Wonderful, so Oviedo is very well-represented, and I'm sure that someone is going to walk away with being one of the winners, and unfortunately, I cannot be there, I feel bad, I was on a committee to put this all together, but as Deputy Mayor said, I did make a commitment as a member of the Women's Club to be at Great Day Friday evening till probably about 8:00, and then again, you know, 5:30 in the morning.
I bet you, if you had a choice, you'd probably come to the event.
If I didn't have the job that I had for Great Day, I would be at the event, but I just can't leave and leave everybody hanging, and it just wouldn't be right.
The vendors wouldn't know where to go, Chief.
Yes, they wouldn't have anyone to fight with, yeah. But, so congratulations to all of you who have been nominated, I wish you a lot of luck, and I'll be thinking about you, so I hope somebody texts me when it's all done to let me know who the winners are, and I hope to see you a great day on Saturday, and that's it.
All right, future meeting dates, anything else?
Do you want to mention something about something else going on Friday?
Okay.
Is that this Friday?
That's this Friday.
No.
Well, we can, I mean, Congressman Mike is coming into our council chambers on Friday afternoon at 11:00 to discuss the road improvement project in the historic downtown. So Congressman's coming down with the District FTO T-Secretary, Noreen Downs, and we are going, Bobby's putting together a small presentation for them to get them updated on where we're at, where we need to be, make sure we're all on the same page, we're going to take them on a tour of the corridor. Mr. Cobb, is the bus arranged yet, or are we still kind of working on that?
His new car.
Yes, we have, we have the bus.
You have the bus?
Yes, sir.
Great.
His new car.
Is that what you just said? So we have a bus to take everyone on a tour, and we'll certainly pitch it as best we can and see if we can get the funding moved up. Looks like from what Bobby's put together, from what I previewed, we're about in the $32 to $33 million range, short for Phase Two.
Phase Two.
Phase Three is another $12 million, but Phase Three isn't as important as Phase One and Phase Two. That's the heart of the downtowns. But that'll be this Friday. Future meeting dates, we have Monday, November 18th, regular session, 6:30 p.m. Then we have Monday, December 2nd, we have our CRA Governing Meeting at 6:00 p.m., regular session at 6:30 p.m. Then we break for December, there is no second meeting in December. Our next meeting will then be Monday, January 6th, I can't believe I'm saying this, 2014, at 6:30 p.m. And Mr. Mayor? Yes?
On December 2nd, the one committee meeting in a year I have for my NASA Committee that's out of town is going to be that week, and I'll be out of town on the 2nd, so I just wanted to declare that I won't be at the meeting.
All right, well, we appreciate that, Councilman Britton, conflicts do happen, nothing we can do about it. With all that being said, does anybody's staff, Council, have anything?
Yeah, is that...
Else? Nope?